I was trying to help Doug Denny.
Yeah, we'll begin soon. We're having some technical issues. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am calling this common council of the City of Wausau to order on Tuesday, May 10th. It's a little past 6:30, about 6:38, and we have a quorum present in chamber. I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now go for roll call. Everybody's present?
Yes, Sarah Leno Alder is present.
Thank you. We are now on public comment, preregistered for citizens for matters appearing on the agenda and other public comment. We have some up here that we will call. I'll call your name, come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes to speak to council. So we'll start with Bruce Grau.
Bruce Grau, 1115 North 10th Street. I looked up and saw the dog tearing across Sixth Street right towards us, his elderly master frantically calling out to him while trying to restrain her other dog, readying to follow her brother. Luckily, they made it across. She explained how her dog is too hard for an old lady to handle, and she wished it had been hit by a passing car. Then she went on to explain his wish for passing would also make finding a new apartment much easier. You see, she and her husband, as she said, are being kicked out. They're being kicked out of their longtime place at the old East High School because the subsidies run out. They don't know where they're going to start now. One eviction, one $600 emergency or medical bill is what separates this elderly couple and their dogs, as well as over half of Wassonians from a home in the street. This barrier is collapsing. Is it truly a situation we can't paint with a broad brush? Well, let's try painting by the numbers. The numbers show a strong positive correlation between housing security and favorable quality of life indicators, including good health and stable employment. The numbers tell us that the cost of childcare accounts significantly for the worst poverty rate, which is experienced by single mothers with children at 96 percent, I mean, sorry, 76%. The 550 number on the waiting list for subsidized housing has doubled in less than two years. Yet, the city has painted in these ARPA numbers with $1 million for public bubblers, not restrooms, $350,000 to a property manager who is reportedly evicting people onto the street, and $800,000 for light bulbs, the cost of a village of tiny homes for unhoused. And in a final stroke, they blew our one chance, our one chance for millions more by unsuccessfully trying to persuade the state that a 10.5 million fancy pedestrian bridge was crucial to our communal recovery from the rampages of COVID. There is something wrong with the picture the city is painting, especially when we've been given an historic amount of money to fill in many of the numbers with the right color of paint. We have the opportunity now to end homelessness, to take a bold stroke and showcase Wausau as a place that takes care of its own and welcomes others. We owe it to decent people like this older couple and their companions. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Keltch.
I'd just like to say the bubblers were 81,000, not a million. Just, I think it's important for, since the public was listening.
Sandy Keltch, 802 Augusta Avenue. Last night, I attended the Human Resource Committee meeting, and I listened to Chief Blivins speak about the struggle with those who are unhoused, and I empathize with the chief and his officers and the weight that they must carry. They are pressured by businesses, the county, and the city to solve the issue of homelessness. He also stated the increase of police hours used to deal with the unhoused, which has increased greatly. However, the information was incomplete, and a clear picture cannot be seen. Did the hours increase because the sheer number of the unhoused has increased? Are officers providing more rides to resources, which we know is time-consuming? How many calls were mental health crisis and not criminal action? How many calls were unfounded or just simply an unfair complaint? We are not denying that there are issues that need to be addressed, or that some of the behaviors of some of the unhoused are undesirable. Some of the behaviors do impede the rights of others to navigate downtown safely and freely, and the police department is responsible to uphold the law in these cases. However, it is time that Wausau stops pulling bodies out of the river and walks upstream to prevent them from falling in. Despite what Lisa Rasmussen stated, there's not an abundance of services for the unhoused who are mentally ill and struggling with addiction. Chief Blivins stated that fact last night. There's a shortage of mental health and addiction services in Wausau. Our group has placed people out of town and out of state to receive treatment. Sobriety cannot be obtained on the streets. Detoxing from alcohol without medical supervision can be a death sentence. Many become unhoused without any addictions and soon find themselves using drugs and alcohol to deal with the life on the streets. Chief Blivins also stated that they are not criminalized homelessness. I must respectfully disagree with this statement. One of the complaints the police department has emphasized is public urination and defecation. When you remove access from public bathrooms and then enforce this ordinance, that is criminalizing homelessness. When you remove public accessibility for places to simply exist or to sleep, that is criminalizing homelessness. The idea that a wealthy property owner can buy an officer to further this push of not allowing a targeted group of individuals in the public area is criminalizing homelessness. What is next on this slippery slope? I remember watching my mother-in-law's face when she was followed in a store and treated as a subhuman simply for being Native American. Who is next on your list of undesirable and subhuman? Is my kid next, disabled, low-income, and Native American? Where does it end?
Thank you. Amanda Lodecki.
Hi, I'm Amanda Lodecki at 616 Sumner Street. I am the Outreach Director for the Community Outreach Task Force. I was here at the last meeting, and I just want to break down how it's looked since the warming shelter has closed. We sat here and prepared for what we thought we could handle, and the numbers are astronomical. When you, if you saw us outside today, we had the signs, and my youngest was actually out there with me. My oldest has a project for his capstone for senior year, and he's doing it on the Housing First Project. And my kids keep asking me, when he does his research, why there are classmates and their friends that are living out of cars? Why they're doing homework out of the backseat of their cars? Why are the people I see every week asking me, where do they go now? When people are bawling and asking you, tell me, where can I go? How are we supposed to answer that? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jo Jean.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jo Jean. I reside at 3400 Springdale Avenue. Let me brief you on my background. I worked for the city 30 years, starting in 1979. When I started, the wastewater plant was under DNR orders, and shortly thereafter, Wausau's drinking water was tainted with VOCs. Needless to say, those and several other challenges were addressed by staff and with the full support of the commission and the city council. Currently, we will be starting up a new drinking water facility and the update and the updated wastewater treatment plant. We are blessed that we started both of these projects at a time with very attractive interest rates and at a more affordable bidding climate about two or three years ago. The concern, will we have adequate personnel resources? Thus, my appeal to this council is to form a task force to address wages and salaries. This matter was addressed at the city or the utility council meeting, but there was no formal action to request that. But so therefore, I'm here making that appeal. I am well aware of staffing shortfalls for the utility and, to some extent, for other departments. In the utility, low starting wages are not attracting candidates for these critical positions to operate these new facilities. And that includes staffing retention is also of a concern. The task force would quickly formulate increments of adjustments that would be in place for the next, would be available to be put in place for the next budget year. If you wait until a formal salary study is completed in two or three years, I'm afraid that will spell doom to hiring and retaining ample personnel resources for all the departments. And I'm done on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's now time for our consent agenda, File 22-0401 through 22-0108, Resolution Approving or Denying Various Licenses As Indicated. I'll take a motion to accept. What? Okay. Motion by Herbst, right?
No, motion by Watson. No, yeah, motion by Watson.
Okay, hang on. Alder Herbst, are you asking to speak?
No, I was going to hit the button.
Oh, okay. I wanted to make sure before we did, took him. Okay, I have a motion by Watson and a second by Larson. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes.
Oh, hang on.
You would like to vote?
Yes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Just so I let the council know, I am still a voting member tonight, so there's some, I'm using my phone, and please bear with me. Okay, we are now on 22-0503, Mayor's Appointments. I don't believe we have any, do we?
Yes, there was one.
One? One mayor appointment? Oh, Mr. Peckham. I'll take a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Rasmussen, a second by Watson. Anybody's, are we having trouble over there, fellas, or you didn't ask to speak? Okay. So, no request to speak?
Okay.
Ready to vote?
You may begin voting. And you would like to vote yes?
Yeah.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay. File number 22-0504, Ordinance Amending Section 10.20.0808 Designating No Parking Here to Corner on the North Side of Cedar Street Between North Third Avenue and North Fourth Avenue From 1.42 Feet West of the Crosswalk at North Third Avenue Back to North Third Avenue No Parking on the North Side of Cedar Street Between North Third Avenue and North Fourth Avenue From 1.76 Feet West of the Crosswalk at North Third Avenue Extending West to North Fourth Avenue And Amending Section 10.20.080B Designating Loading Zone on the North Side of Cedar Street Beginning at 1.42 Feet West at the Crosswalk at North Third Avenue and Extending West 34th Street. And that was one sentence. I'll take a motion. We have a motion by Watson and a second by Rasmussen. No request to speak. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting.
Yes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, we are up to File 22-0108, Public Health and Safety Resolution Approving or Denying Various Licenses As Indicated. They are in your packet? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm sorry. 20-0826 ED Resolution Approving Second Amendment to Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Easements for Wausau East River Fund. Motion, okay, we have a motion by Herbst and a second by Martins. Any discussion? Everybody's chatty tonight. Seen none?
You may begin voting.
Yes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, perfect. We are up to File Number 15-0708 ED Resolution Approving Second Amendment to Development Agreement Between City of Wausau and Riverlife Condos LLC Mitch Vigut.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Watson, a second by Denny. Any?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, we're up to File 19-0921 ED Resolution Approving Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Wausau Center Mall Redevelopment Project with Greater Wausau Prosperity Partnership LTD and Wausau Opportunity Zone Incorporated, WAS. I have a motion by Rasmussen, a second by Herbst. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hold on for a second here. I gotta get my computer right here. On page 77, the third dot down, it says it clarifies that the city has the option in the future to cease operation of one or both of the parking lots. WAS has the opportunity to buy for $1 if that happens. My question is, my first question is, is who owns the parking lot? Who owns the parking ramps and who owns the land underneath it?
The city to both questions.
Okay, all right, and thank you. And speaking from, as my constituents from District 10, they're really, really sick of us seeing us giving away property for a dollar. And if this were to go through, that means we would have to hold this property for a dollar, and that would exclude any other developers from coming along and possibly wanting to do something else with it. Is that correct?
I don't know, Liz, if you want to come up. I don't know that we're required to hold it necessarily for any length of time, but maybe you can speak to that, Liz.
I don't know that we have a requirement of length of time that we would be holding that. Basically, this provision was put in because if, in the event that a parking lot would become, basically not to the city's benefit to operate anymore, with WAS having owning that land, it would make the most sense for them to be able to buy and operate the parking lot on that parcel. So that was the, it was basically, you know, a very, a future contingency that we don't, you know, we have no, we don't foresee happening in the near future or anything, but we wanted to account for the possibility.
And thank you, Ms. Broderick. And so then I'm trying to press this amend button, but it don't want to work.
It did appear, I did get an occasion that you want to amend.
Okay, so I would like to offer amendment to this, that if WAS has the opportunity to buy this for fair market value instead of $1.
Did we get that? Okay, we have an amendment. Do we have a second to that amendment? Okay, we have a second by Killian and Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. That provision was part of the original agreement, and as far as the modifications that were published in our agenda and in our packet that we were intending to make, that really was not part of the posted item. So can we consider a change to terms like that without public notice? I mean, that contract was approved, that agreement was approved more than a year ago, and we spelled out what changes we were intending to make in the meeting packet, and that was not part of it. So are we?
That was a term that was previously approved. You're correct, in the term sheet. So I think what's more accurate is to say that what we're clarifying is that the city has the option in the future to cease operating the parking lots. That was really the clarification. So I suppose he can move to amend it, but we're still going to have to abide by our previous agreement, which hasn't been changed. I don't think this amendment to this resolution is going to change that, although the BEAT resolve says we approve the Second Amendment in substantially the form which is attached heretofore. And I don't believe anything, I don't have that copy in here, but I don't believe anything in the amendment, I mean, in the actual amendment itself that we're going to record says anything about, or would change that. I think we've agreed to that in the past.
We had, and my point is that there's been no opportunity for negotiation or vetting or discussion with the developer whose party to the contract. So we can't just arbitrarily change the terms that we have committed to more than a year ago without first public notice and then some discussion with the other party to the contract. And I think that really is a bad look for us if we would shift on the fly and make substantive changes to an agreement without opportunity for negotiation between the city and the developer, and then proper vetting in the committee as well. I mean, any of those changes should come back to the ED committee.
I would agree with that.
And be worked through. I think we're not following the right process if we start to amend anything beyond what's listed on our agenda item.
I would agree with that. If this were to pass, I'd have to go back and look at the actual document and render an opinion that most likely would say that we can't go back on a previously negotiated and approved agreement with them.
So then your recommendation is that the amendment should not pass?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Alder Denny?
Okay, I guess I was going to say the same thing. If we're going to renegotiate, both parties need to be at the table to negotiate that. I don't think we can, we can do this after the fact.
Okay, Alder Watson.
I guess, is page 77 that agreement where the $1 shows up? Isn't that part of the previous agenda item? For the Riverlife Condos? I mean, is that $1, I don't think I see it in the one, the current agenda item. $89?
I would say, too, from a practical standpoint, it's probably going to cost $2 million or more dollars to take that ramp down if someone wanted to use it for another purpose, as well as today our ramps live on the levee. So, you know, from a practical standpoint, it's unlikely that someone else would want it. I guess I'm saying that it would be hard to determine the market value, if there would be any, because who would want to run the ramp and own it, and if they wanted it for another purpose. I do recall seeing something, Appleton took down a ramp, and it was in excess of $2 million to take down the ramp. Obviously, it is cost WAS that much to take down the mall. So it's, you know, from a practical standpoint, I'm not sure what that value actually would be.
Okay, Alder Larson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for Attorney Jacobson. So what you're saying is that the dollar part was or was not in the last, the first part of the, when this was first negotiated, you said, was the dollar, was it in there or was it not in there?
I believe that's always been in there. And so what this is, what this amendment is doing is talking about the only changes of replacing the ground in air rights lease with specific agreements going forward and providing for the deeding of the land to the city to make new streets and the city's obligation to do so. So one of the minor things was just clarifying that we are not required to continue operating the ramps. If it's disadvantageous to the city, we can cease operating it. And this line here was merely to point out that in the event that we cease operating them, WAS already has the option of purchasing them for a dollar. That's been in there since the beginning.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Alder Gussman.
Request to speak with regard to the main motion, not to the amendment, so you may want to just act on the amendment, and then I'll come back.
Okay, I have somebody. Alder Killian, are you talking to the amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to, I guess, address and ask some questions about Ms. Groth's commentary on market value and being practical. That doesn't sound practical. That sounds kind of like theoretical economics to me. I'm not aware that market value hinges on, you know, how expensive it is to demolish a structure. And furthermore, I mean, while there are differences between assessments by the government and appraisals privately, if that were the case, anytime there was a challenging situation with development, that would seem to imply that on the assessment side, the city simply wouldn't tax the property owner if that's the definition of value in that context. So I would disagree with that. And I think if anything, whatever happens in this case, maybe we should have a more formal, practical definition of value moving forward and include these in these situations so that we're not creating kind of on-the-fly commentary that may not be accurate. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak to the amendment? If not, I guess we'll vote on the amendment and, yeah. The amendment, of what I understand, and Alder Larson, if it's wrong, let me know, but it was a motion to amend to have WAS pay fair market value for the land? If what happens?
If what happens?
Yes, yes, as you said, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
You may begin voting. Motion fails two to nine.
Okay. And I'll go back to, we're on the main motion without the amendment. Alder Gisselman, do you have a comment?
A question just with regard to the final result, resolves. And maybe this is just wordsmithing, but it says that in substantially the form of what, that which is attached. Is that, to me, that's a wiggle word, but I'm not sure substantially in the form of that which is attached. So does that mean there's other words that can be added or subtracted or not?
It does, Alder Gisselman, but only to the extent that it's not substantial or material, that it doesn't change the meaning of any of the provisions of the amendment. And honestly, it's a very detailed matter in paragraph two and three where we were trying to make the words consistent with, if you all recall, like terminating the original redevelopment agreement and repealing the original redevelopment plan that went through transit and CDA. And I don't think it went to ED, it went to transit, CDA, and the Quater Commission. And so we were just wordsmithing a little bit those two paragraphs because it said something about publishing something or recording a resolution, which we don't typically do. So we were just wanting to change that to providing a certified copy of the resolution if it passes. But we need to negotiate those language changes to the Second Amendment with the developer. So those are not substant, it was just making wording consistent about providing certified copies of the resolution, which doesn't materially change anything, but we still need their agreement. So we're not executing it in the exact form that it's attached to the resolution. But that was the basic reason for saying in substantially the same form, so that we could wait to get agreement from the developer on some just very minor wording changes. Does that make sense? All right. Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to know, we're done with the amendment, go back to the quote unquote kind of practical commentary on this. And so we heard that, you know, the private sector apparently wouldn't find this very appealing because they'd have to pay to demolish the parking ramp if they wanted to use it. So that being said, why would it be appealing to this facet of the private sector? More specifically, who would be paying for that demolition then if WSA were to take it for a dollar? And I understand that would include public funds for that demolition, just as it did for the prior demolition?
It certainly isn't in the current agreement that we have to demolish the ramp. So I would say we have no obligation at this point.
Thank you. But to your commentary on practicality and the rest of the private sector would not find it appealing, then why would this portion of the private sector find it appealing? Just based on pure reason and logic, that would imply that there must be some fiscal element of this that WSA would find it appealing. So what is that?
I don't have the specifics on that. You can ask them, but I don't know.
Are they here to answer my question?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joe Mella. I am the Secretary for WSA Opportunity Zone Incorporated and also work, do some legal work for WSA Opportunity Zone as well. The question I think you're asking is why is, or why was WSA Opportunity Zone interested in obtaining rights to the parking structures? It is principally because what we are hoping to see redevelop there, because we're not the ones who are actually doing the redevelopment, we're just trying to find people to do that for us, is that those parking structures would continue to be used by whatever redevelopments happen in those locations. So if there were high-density apartments, for example, that go in, there would be parking that would be available for those folks because you just, we're in a downtown area, we can't manufacture new parking in new places. We'd really like to be able to continue to utilize those ramps. So that's why we wanted a fail safe in the event the city sometime in the future said, we're not going to run the ramps any longer. We wanted the opportunity to be able to buy them so that we could then try to run them. So that's why that's, that's why that provision is there.
Thank you, Mr. Mella. And could you tell me, do you know if you or your client would then intend for the municipal government to fund the demolition should that situation arise?
You know, we'd have to address that when we got to it. I mean, the reality here is we would be buying it to continue to run them. We wouldn't be buying them to tear them down.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question for Ms. Broderick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mella. Yes. We had spoke maybe a week or week and a half ago, and I had asked about if something could be put together showing the amount of public dollars put into the project to date, as well as the amount of private dollars from WSA put into the project to date. Do we have anything like that currently?
No. If you recall, I sent an email to the Economic Development Committee, which you sit on, about sometime last week, indicating that I would be intending to provide that at the next Special Economic Development Committee meeting. I have been out of the office this whole week so far, so have not had an opportunity to do that yet.
Okay, thank you for that information. I understand everyone has, oh, thank you, Ms. Broderick. I do think though it would be prudent in this type of situation where it's possibly insinuating that we may be on the line for millions and millions more dollars if there's a demolition down the road, to have an accounting of how many public dollars have gone in to date and how many private dollars have gone in. Maybe that could just go on the kind of potential improvement list for the future. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Doesn't look like it. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting.
Yeah.
Motion passes nine to two.
Thank you. We're up to file number 22-0509 from Finance Resolution Authorizing City Officials to Contract with Flash Vote for One Year of Their Survey Tool. I have a motion by Herbst, a second by Martins. No request to speak?
You may begin voting.
Yes.
Motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you. File number 21-1109 from Finance Resolution Approving Modification of the 2022 Budget General Fund Uncompleted Projects. I have a motion by Watson, second by Rasmussen. Looks like no one wants to speak.
You may begin voting.
Yeah.
Motion passes 10 to 1.
File number 21-0517 Resolution Authorizing City Officials to Expand Ailer's Public Finance Advisors Investment Advisory Services for Two-Year Pilot Program. Oh, I missed one. Yep. We'll come back. So we're going to keep on this one. Yep, 21-0517. We're going to do that one and then we'll come back to Finance.
The application, you want to come back to the application?
Yep. Okay, we have a motion by Rasmussen and a second by Denny. Any comments?
You may begin voting.
I can vote, yes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, so, okay, file number 21-1109. No, the next one. Okay, I thought so. 22-0507 Resolution Approving the Application for City of WSA to Host a One Week Home Repair Work Camp in the Summer of 2023 Through Group Work Camps. I have a motion by Watson, second by Killian. Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This sounds really positive. When I had read about it, it suggested that I believe a sponsor, a cosponsor also played a role in suggesting sites or locations that work would be done. I believe it was just a recommendation or suggestion, but do we know if that's the case?
Thank you for your question on this. Yeah, so as part of the process, and this is going to be a really year-long process, starting now till when the camp would happen next summer. But as part of our cosponsorship, we would be out kind of advertising, I'll call it, for applications, for homes, for people to come in and apply through the program. We don't make the decisions on choosing them, that's done through the organization. But we kind of help get the word out to potential projects to happen.
Thank you for that info. And is there any possibility that there could be kind of a scoring matrix involved on this? And I could tell you my thought if that's possible.
I don't, I don't have enough information on how they go through that process, so sorry.
Okay, no problem. You know, as we move forward on this, if we do, I think that one thing that might be helpful, given the nature of the work, would be to weight these based on the percentage of low-income residents in census block group areas. So starting at the top with the highest percentage of low-income residents per census group area, block group area, and then moving down as the number declines, if that's a possibility, that would just be my suggestion because I think then, you know, it would go to where the work may be needed the most.
Yeah, and I'm not familiar completely with the process. My understanding is the group work camps will be the ones actually choosing the projects, but I can definitely pass that along and try to get a better understanding of how they go about their selection.
Okay, that would be excellent. Thank you.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
File 22-0505 Ordinance Rezoning 180 East WSA Avenue from HI Heavy Industrial Zoning District to UMU Urban Mixed Use Zoning District. That's a plan. Okay, I have a motion by Herbst, second by Watson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to our file of, I'm going to ask you to suspend the rules, 6B filing and 12A referral of resolutions. A two-third vote is required. I have a motion by Watson and a second by Denny.
No discussion.
Yep.
Did you vote? I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't tell you to vote. Okay. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, we're up to file 79-1036 Council Resolution Terminating Redevelopment Agreement Between Redevelopment Authority of the City of WSA and WSA Joint Venture. Okay, I have a motion by Martins and a second by Henke. Any discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, file 01-0725 Ordinance Amending Section 1.12.010 City Wards in Section 1.12.015 Aldermanic Districts. I have a motion by Denny, a second by Henke. Okay, Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. Just for the public that watches this, whenever we do anything that has to do with Aldermanic districts or lines, people are usually concerned about that. So Caitlin, if you could just walk us through the purpose of the change, just so people can understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So the US Supreme Court struck down the previous new state congressional maps, or sorry, state legislative maps that were established for the state of Wisconsin. And so then the Wisconsin Supreme Court later selected different maps for these, for the state legislative districts. So because of that, those district lines now split wards 10 and 11 in the city of WSA, and it's a state statute that you cannot have ward split between assembly seats. So this ordinance amendment will create two new wards, wards 24 and 25, and they'll take those sections from wards 10 and 11 respectively. But they'll stay in the same Aldermanic districts here at the city level.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Hang on, I need to see this. All right, thank you. Got it. Okay. Just needed a little clarification on these that came in just tonight. Okay, file number 21-0413 from Finance, a resolution approving waiver of appraisal settlement around temporary limited easement and payment request for 7575 Bombardier Court. I have a motion by Rasmussen, a second by Watson. Any discussion? Okay, Alder Killian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All of these in the, in the list here on the agenda, there was a third-party company involved, correct, that verified all state and federal requirements were complied with. I believe the answer is yes, I just want to confirm.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Gisselman.
Okay. All right. I see nobody else.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, file 21-0413 from Finance, a resolution approving waiver of appraisal settlement amount, temporary limited easement and payment request for 7255 Stewart Avenue. Okay, I have a motion by Denny, second by Watson. No discussion?
You may begin voting.
Yep.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. File number 21-0413 Resolution Approving Waiver of Appraisal Settlement Amount, Temporary and Permanent Limited Easement and Payment Request for 400 South 72nd Avenue. I have a motion by Herbst, a second by Lukens, and Alder Denny?
Yeah, just a quick question. So the, the amounts specified are listed now publicly?
Yes.
Or they will, or they are?
Yes.
Okay.
We are still on the four, for the four that were approved and open at Finance previously, which had been approved and closed, the Finance Committee before that. And then the remaining two, which are on the backside of the agenda, excuse me, Mary Ann, are the two that just went into close previous to this meeting, and they came out and to open and approve them. Those amounts will be announced here at Council.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Okay.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay. File 21-0413 Resolution Approving Waiver of Appraisal Settlement Amount, Temporary and Permanent Limited Easement and Payment Request for 400 North 72nd Avenue. I have a motion by Watson, a second by Larson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes. Motion passes unanimously.
And now those last two. Okay. Yep. Okay, these are the ones that just went through closed session in Finance. File number 21-0413, Resolution Approving Waiver for Appraisal Settlement Amount, Temporary and Permanent Limited Easement and Payment Request for 7500 Stewart Avenue.
Passed on a vote of five to zero.
Five to zero, and that's the first one, right?
Yeah.
And that fiscal impact is $3,700. Okay, I have a motion by Rasmussen, a second by Lukens. Any discussion? Okay.
You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
Okay. And another file, number 21-0413, passed Finance today, five to zero, fiscal impact of $16,140 for approval of waiver of appraisal settlement amount, temporary and permanent limited easement, and payment request for 720 South 72nd Avenue.
Is it $16,740?
Yeah, $16,740. I have a motion by Watson, second by Herbst.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
We had a long, a long agenda. Very well, very well. Public comments, anybody, this is a portion, we can ask anybody for, that would like to give public comment to the council? One? Going twice? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Yep. I know.
There you go.
Okay, I have a motion by Watson and a second by Denny. And we are at?
Voice vote.
What?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.